I guess, did they tell you Beth's not gonna make?
Yeah.
I called you?
Jake, we also-
No call back?
You called me? When?
Day after the ATM. I checked the phone messages.
All right.
I'll look.
Good evening.
We'll talk.
Welcome to the Brookfield SLUAC meeting, 7 o'clock on June 17th. I want to make one announcement, that we are being video and the audio recorded. So let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, god and invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Brookfield Ecumenial Food Pantry at St. Mary's is seeking donations of condiments, paper products, liquid hand soap, shampoo, laundry detergent. Items may be dropped off Wednesday and Saturdays from 9:30 to 11:00 at the food pantry at St. Mary's at the corner of Lincoln Street and Howard Street. Ron, do you want to do the warrants?
Yes, sir. We have two warrants before us this evening. We have one fiscal year 2025-G25, so a cable warrant in the amount of $224,188.82. And the other is also 2025-G25, it's an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $508,121.71.
All right, thank you. First item, agenda item is the Gay Road project. We have a highway superintendent here. Kyle, do you mind coming up? So... Yep. So go ahead, Kyle, I'll let you... Go ahead with it. Just start out with last Friday, how the bid opening went.
Eleven bidders bid on the project. The bid tabulation and bid evaluations came in through our engineering service. Both of the low bidders' references were contacted. All references spoke well of both contractors and their quality of work, having worked with them in the past. The scope of work includes full depth reclamation from the rice corner split to the high tension power lines. And within... The low bid was $969,555 was base bid.
Okay, so can you just explain a little bit about the add alternate? How that changed from one, from the low bidder going to the second bidder? And just so the audience and the people at home will know the difference?
Within the initial grant scope, the engineered plans showed a scope of work to the high tension power lines. We chose to add an alternate based on the price of asphalt to potentially take it to the town line. But however, the add alternates came in higher than we were anticipating. So we're gonna put a hold on that and just stay within the initial grant scope, to stay within the money allotted within the grant. And we'll revisit the second half of the project with our Chapter 90 bitted contract for materials.
So, based on that, typically, the low bid for any roadwork, Chapter 90, that we do typically, there's a chance that we could save several thousand dollars going with the project. Like last year was Mass Broken Stone, that was awarded a bid for Chapter 90. And when is that bid opening?
That bid opening is tomorrow at 2:00 PM.
Okay. And based on the current price of asphalt and oils and fuel, things have not gone up, we're anticipating the numbers to be about the same?
Same, yes.
So if that happens, then we would actually save some money not going with the add alternate low bidder, but stick with the low bidder of the initial project? And then do the secondary paving on the state, or the local bid that we would get?
That's correct.
Okay. Sarah, do you have any questions about that? Ron, you good? Do you have anything?
No, just said it is important to sign contracts. The grant period ends on July 30th, so obviously it's imperative that we finalize-
June 30th?
Oh, excuse me, June 30th.
Okay.
So it's imperative that we do sign the contract and move forward.
So I did speak to Kyle about that. Wondering if we could have another meeting on Thursday after we open the bids tomorrow morning? But he said time is such a factor that we probably should do this tonight. So, and you're in agreement with that as well?
I agree, yes.
Okay. All right. So at that point, are you comfortable with the low bidder? And speaking with the engineer, was he comfortable with the low bidder?
Yes. With the low bid base bid being Piapi Construction.
Okay.
969-555.
Okay. And I know him to be a competent bidder, that he's done several projects in town as well, so... Okay. Do you have any questions about that, Sarah?
No, my bad.
So is that your recommendation then?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to go with the Piapi Construction for the Gay Road project, for the base bid. Any other discussion from the audience?
Kyle, what was the engineer's estimate?
The proposed construction cost? 1.2. And that was after multiple line items were decided to be taken in-house by us. The original came in at 1.45. But what was advertised legally? 1.25. You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I guess that's it, Piapi gets it.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for coming in. So you'll follow up with Ron, and Ron will... Right, you'll... Okay. All right, well, thank you. Agenda item number two, we're gonna pass over. Just so the audience knows, it was about our Facebook discussion. But the young lady that was in charge, Beth Olson, just had a baby, so we're gonna give her a couple weeks. So, good luck to her and her new baby. Number three, discussion of Town Hall Improvement Committee and fiscal year '25 and '26 projects. Dawn, do you want to come up and address? I'm assuming that's why you're here? Or one of the reasons?
Yep.
Okay. I'll let you... I'll let you get started, and then we'll join in.
Well, I don't know what your question is.
No?
Other than we have annually gotten about $14,000 each year for the Town Hall Improvement Committee to make repairs. And we've been doing that, I think this is like our eighth year, so...
Well, thank you for the hard work you put in.
Do you want to list the projects that we did in '24?
No, I think I'm good. I know the work has been ongoing since you guys took over, and it's, and it shows in the building. There's a lot of, a lot of new stuff here, including the handicap bathroom and the other bathroom redone. But one of the things that was brought up was how tight we are with money at year's end this year. Ron had spoke to... In fact, I'm just gonna let you speak of it, Ron.
Sure. Yeah, I was notified, you know, a week or so ago by the town accountant Lori. And she'd indicated that in looking and performing some analysis of the current budget, that her, the, she's identified, obviously, the deficit accounts. And generally, what she'll do is she'll identify surplus accounts and take the surplus to apply and supplement the deficit accounts. Unfortunately, this year, she's running very, very tight. In fact, she really, up until a couple days ago, was quite concerned that we weren't gonna be actually able to supplement those budgets, deficit budgets. Luckily, I think we have reached a point where she is now gonna lease a little bit more confidence that we will be able to cover those deficit balances. The problem being is, with the Town Hall Improvements Committee, they have two projects that are currently literally scheduled. One is for redoing the studio, the quote-unquote "green room," if you will, up on the second floor of the great hall, or off adjacent to the great hall. And then the other is a project to refinish the stairs leading up to the second floor, the second floor lobby, and also my office as well. Both of those have been scheduled with the contractor. The problem, and the good news is, Town Hall Improvement Committee does have it in their budget. The bad news is, that is potentially one of those sources, surplus sources, that Lori's gonna have to utilize to be able to supplement those deficit budgets. So the concern there is if we do, in fact, pay those funds, pay those invoices for those two projects, it's gonna cut us down that much further. And Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the refinishing of the second floor flooring is approximately $5,500?
It's $5,504.
Okay. And then the, for the green room or the studio, I believe that was around $1,400?
$1,254, I believe.
So you can see, we're approaching about $7,000 there. And unfortunately, we are that tight, where $7,000 is a concern.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of holding that until, A, we get through this fiscal year, and B, I think it's more important that we come up with a way to figure out how to finish all the windows and put storm windows in the buildings. In this particular building, last winter, as I went from office to office, I watched every office have a small electric heater, and still, people at their desks shivering. Got to one point where our custodian was trying to put plastic in front of windows and put rags in between the sash, and it, to me, I think we're going the wrong, the wrong way to finish floors before we do the windows. And you and I have spoke briefly about it, and there's not really been much follow-up. But I know that your board is willing to look into the windows, and I've done some work as well, so I would-
Right, well, I was actually waiting for you, because you were gonna get back to us with whatever it was you found on the windows.
Yep.
And I told you I had some possible information. You said, "Well, wait, I'll get back to you." And I haven't heard anything, so...
Well, I'm waiting for the quotes also. I've spoke to three different vendors, and... I've been in this business for a long time, where I deal with window companies quite a bit. When I do a new house, the difference is, the storms on the town hall is significantly different. So I can't just pick up the phone with the vendors that I'm used to working with, so... And you know what? People are not getting back to me in a timely fashion. So I will keep you posted on it. We did speak a couple weeks ago about it, and I will keep you in the loop.
Well, back on the, on the two contracts that are presently committed, one actually, I believe, starts tomorrow. That's the, that's the floors in the, in the green room. And the other one, which we've been working on since October 18th of last year, was when we sent you the first notice about redoing the floors. So here we are, we've been working on it for eight months, or whatever. And we've awarded the contract. I think we've had it bid two or three different times. Once we got it rebid in order to try to get earmark money, so... Anyway, the contract is awarded. It's scheduled for the 26th. It was scheduled that way in order to take advantage of you being out of the office, done on a Friday, so that we could, you know, get help in moving things.
I'm not, I'm not sure where the gap is, but I told Ron at least three weeks ago that I am not in favor of that. We put a spending freeze on of, I recommended a $100 freeze. The other two SLUAC board members overruled me, and they went with $500. But that was more than three weeks ago. So I'm not sure why that didn't get back to you, what the lack of communication is. But I am not in favor of spending that money right now. And I'm not gonna apologize, because I made it clear to Ron to that that was not a priority to do the floors before the windows. The windows are my top priority, and I've been saying that for quite some time.
Well, I do not speak for the committee. I'm only one person. So I'd have to go, would have to have another meeting and see if that's what the committee would like to do, is try to cancel... I don't, I don't think there's any possibility you cancel one for tomorrow, or, I think it's tomorrow.
What, you thought you just said the 26th, is that not-
There's one for tomorrow. That's the green room, which I just mentioned. And then the other one is the 26th. I don't know what it'll cost us to cancel it.
The green room, why didn't it come out of the PEG? Organic come out of PEG?
That is a good question, because in the green room currently, right now, there is the cable studio, if you will, as well as the, at least the initial stages of applicable contract review as well.
So could we split it?
Who's, so...
Could we say like 50% goes out of the PEG?
We could certainly-
We could certainly ask Lori, if that's acceptable. To be honest, Lori has usually drawn a hard line with regards to PEG. But it's certainly worth asking, to see if we could pay for at least half of that through PEG funds.
Yeah, I think it's only appropriate that we, if the office is for Jacob, for, and that's what the PEG fund is for.
Yeah.
Did you, did you get the notice about the $500 freeze?
I was here for the meeting, yes. I knew that there was a $500 freeze.
So how did we-
Well, nobody said that we can't do this. I think it was relayed that we had a contract in place.
What do you say, Ron?
Well, when we discussed it at the Town Hall Improvements Committee meeting last Wednesday, Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, the consensus-
I don't know, I wasn't there, unfortunately. I had a doctor's appointment that day, so-
Oh, okay.
Mary Lou was there, but I was not-
Oh, that's right, Mary Lou was there, that's correct. The consensus seemed, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, the consensus seemed to be from, from the Town Hall Improvements Committee that, you know, if the money's not there, it's not there. And to kick the can down the road, if possible, into fiscal year '26, and potentially use funds from fiscal year '26 that were allotted at the town meeting.
The money is there, and the contractor has brought supplies, and it's scheduled to go on the 26th. We moved it back a week or two to coordinate your vacation.
So you, so-
So I know there was a spending freeze, but nobody said you can't do that project, it was already committed.
Well, I think that's what a spending freeze is, but I don't know how it was relayed. But to me, a spending freeze is a spending freeze. Especially when, like Ron said, Lori needs to pull from certain accounts to get other departments through that are in a deficit. The Town Hall Improvement Committee has run their budget very well, and not in a deficit. But we do have other departments that, the fire department and ambulance, that had no control with the number of calls that they've had. And Peter Sane, his calls were up, I don't know if it was 70, 80% of last year. So, so he's in a deficit.
And the law account is way, way over.
The legal fund is way over, yeah. What do you say, Sarah?
I don't know, maybe one, I guess. I don't know, I guess I have two problems. One, a communication issue, not saying it's you, Dawn, at all.
Communication in general is pretty poor.
Yes, and now I feel like we kind of look bad, saying no to the contractor that they, you know, put the work in from October till now. But from a standing, from a budget standpoint, yeah, we're in a deficit. But, I don't know, I'm on the border. Because, yeah, at the end of the day, either, either way, we look bad. So I feel like we look bad to the contractor backing out at this point, and we look bad to them for saying no.
Well, a possible solution, I'll put that in quotes, is to maybe go ahead with the smaller project, see if we can pull it from PEG. It's $1,200 and change, so if we-
I think it's... I think it's $1,275.
Okay, so, $1,275, see if we can pull at least half of that from PEG. Now we're talking a small amount Lori would have been able to utilize to supplement a deficit account. And then for the other project, we can kick that can down the road into FY '26, and potentially use funding there, or discuss it further, depending upon what we find out from the contractor.
Well, I'm a hard no on the second one, based on, and I'm gonna say it again, I've said it many times now, the windows are more of a priority than sanding and finishing the landing and the stairs, so...
So you want to cancel that contract totally?
You can leave it stay running, and if we have enough window, enough money to fix the windows and do that, then that's what we'll do. But if we don't have enough to get to it, the windows are my priority.
Now, when you and I discussed the windows, I thought we were talking about indoor plexiglass, so it's not-
On some of them, on, in the second floor, in the big room, but not on the, not on these, not on windows that have-
That is certainly well beyond any funding that the Town Hall Improvement Committee has.
Well, we get $25,000 in earmark. You have $14,000 in your new budget, and then you have almost $8,000 left over from this year. So when we put it all together, I think we're gonna get quite a bit of the windows done. And even if it's only the ones that the rooms are occupied during the year, the winter months, like the big banquet hall upstairs, that's not occupied. So if we can't get to that, we can't get to it. But I'm sure you've seen the people huddled around space heaters in every office.
That's correct, yep.
So, that's my prior-
Which are illegal, actually.
There you go. Come on up, if you don't mind. Jacob, do you have a mic, maybe, so Mary Lou doesn't have to come up?
Are you saying that you are going to use all of the Town Hall Improvement money in '25, '26 for the windows? Therefore, there is no point in having it in committee?
Well, that's-
There's a, there's a very good possibility of that.
So I guess you can have my resignation? Because you can do it all. I'm done.
We'll get you on the agenda for next week. If you're gonna quit over the priority of windows versus finishing floors, Dawn, that's your prerogative.
Can I just make a point more? I would like to state that, at least in my, whatever, years on volunteer committee, it's normally the Building Improvements Committee would look at everything, and then make the determination, and bring it, and then it's been decided, it's been decided. If there's something else that the select board wishes to do, then they should report back to the Building Improvements Committee for them to discuss it.
Well, I definitely, I definitely made that clear with our town administrator that-
That doesn't sound like there's some sort of a communication.
Well, I guess that's part of the, that's the secondary conversation here, that the communication is poor, and it's on the agenda. But I will say that I've been talking about the windows since, since last winter. And I did have a discussion with Dawn about the same thing, so...
Another question, just on the budget. When will Lori know as far as how close we are?
It's literally gonna go to the right, to the last minute. Like I said, her confidence level is higher now than it was even just a couple days ago, that she'd be able to, to cover the deficit accounts with some of the surpluses. But it's, it's very, very tight at this point.
Yeah, okay. This is a little bit off the subject, but I was saying, when I saw, I mean, we have the transfer request on schedule, I mean, the license will be released Tuesday. But this is the first time that I've seen such a large number of transfer requests for large numbers. So that, to me, is a bigger point, is did we mess something up? Or something happened during the budget season process, whatever?
No, I think the bigger thing is, the ambulance had more calls than they had money for. They, their accounts receivable, that they haven't been able to collect. And frankly, some of the calls just don't pay for, right? I mean, when you're talking about some of the calls with people that have limited funds, and... And then secondly, the fire department has had an abundance of more calls, and so they're in a big deficit as well. Who else is in a big deficit for numbers?
Well, as I said, the law account is-
And the lar.
At least $20,000.
That's, that's, you know, the lead. I can only think that the cyclicality of whenever the fire calls came, perhaps last year, we didn't, we budgeted on the back, the first part of it rather than the second half, and the second half increased maybe, that's the only thing I can think of.
Well, the good news is, you get more funds at the annual town meeting, so hopefully, we're not in this problem next year. So...
If I, if I may, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm looking for some clarification as to where you stand on the two contracts that are pending. You're saying, stop them, I guess? Or are you looking into split funding the one that's due tomorrow? I don't even know if I can stop that. Or are you looking into split funding the one that's due tomorrow? I don't even know if I can stop that one.
Valid point.
Well, tell me what to do. I guess I'm asking.
Ron, I'm gonna put you on the spot. I, I made it clear weeks ago that we were not gonna spend for the floors while we have such deplorable window situation. The amount of money we spent in electricity last year with space heaters all over this place, I can't even imagine if we could separate it, what that number would be. And then secondly, it was really clear to me, and Don, you said you were here, that we put a $500 spending freeze on. Did you ask Ron to have that removed for the $1,200 that you want to spend on?
No, actually, I guess my understanding was the spending freeze was on any new spending. These, these were already contracts in place.
The money wasn't spent, but you, you had a contract, but it wasn't executed. So Peter Mattel also, he had a similar situation, with the exception, he had two firefighters in a class. The money wasn't expended, however, they were already entered in the class, and we were not gonna pull them out of the class. But doing a contract for the, for a floor in the room for cable access and Apple radio, clearly to me would not be a priority to spend over 500. That, that's my personal opinion.
I, I guess nobody, nobody specifically said stop this.
But you, you just said that you were here when we put the five, you heard me ask for a $100 spending freeze because it was that grim back then, and I was outvoted 2 to 1 that it went to 500. So you, you heard that full discussion, and then you still lined up-
Did you hear my, my, what I just said? My understanding was that was stop spending on any, any new spending that was coming up. These contracts were in place. Nobody told me, nobody told the committee to stop those contracts. Not me. I'm only on the committee, or was on the committee.
Well, I think I know where the, I think I know where the lack of communication is, and I got a point, put Ron on the spot here, because you clearly were in the same communications, and you've been communicating with Don, because Don's not running any of this by me, it's by you, because you're here. So how did we get to this, and how do we fix it?
Well, my understanding, I guess, was probably very similar to yours, that the $500, well, originally 100, and then voted up to, to 500, was to stop spending from that point forward. And if there was gonna be an invoice, it would have to come through and be approved by the town administrator.
So Ron, you were at the meeting, at the Town Hall Improvement meeting last-
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Right.
I unfortunately wasn't there. Was the Town Hall Improvement Committee giving directions to stop those contracts at that time?
Directions? No, because we, in fact, I notified them that they were gonna have this meeting and this discussion today, or tonight, I should say, and as I said, the consensus of the committee was, if we have to kick the can down the road, then they're willing to do that.
I don't, I didn't have that understanding.
Well, then we'll have to agree to disagree on that. That was, that was clearly my understanding, is that they realize, in fact, I may have been Chairman Simpson who indicated if the money's not there, it's not there.
It's too bad no one's in here.
Do you mind coming up?
Yeah.
Just a quick.
Dave Holcraft, Allen Road. As far as Don goes, can't we just take that money out of the old '26 budget? That little bit of money, then, just, they, they won't get paid, they just have to wait till they get paid, till the new budget starts in. Just a thought, just for this one situation.
No, you can't, you can't spend '26 money in '25.
No? Okay.
Now, and you are appropriating the '26 money for the windows, am I correct?
If the 25,000, that was earmarked from, from our state rep, is not enough, I'm gonna try to get money from everywhere I can, any other accounts. Can you, do you wanna, like, why are you rolling your eyes and making a face? Like, do you sit in any of these offices in the winter when the wind's blowing through, and the, and the Board of Health Secretary said, "It's not even legal for me to be in here." It's supposed to be 68 degrees, and it's 62 degrees in this building? Like, and, and I offered the secretary to come downstairs, she opted not to, she said she was leaving in an hour. But that's the condition of this building. How could we even consider doing floors and other projects till we do our windows? I, I don't mean any disrespect, but it's so, such a simple concept to me. I don't understand how you would fight it.
I just, this one question, just procedurally. Sorry, Jeff Clark, 101 Brunel Avenue. Again, if you had these issues in, in January, and you went to the Building Improvements Committee and expressed them, then obviously they had-
Don and I spoke.
They had some discussion and decided to do the floors rather than the windows, so there's, there's a difference of opinion.
Well, if you, if you read the task of the Town Hall Improvement Committee, have you read the task lately, Don? I don't know if you were one of the first members on, but if you look at the task of the Town Hall Improvement Committee, it identifies that you look for projects, you bring them to the Board of Selectmen, you get the approval from the Board of Selectmen before you even schedule or offer contracts, and if the Board of Selectmen approves it, then you run the project. So I think that there's a miscommunication with the Town Hall Improvement Committee as well, as to procedurally how they're running it.
We have, we have a plan, and we have submitted it. And you're talking about the windows, which is a major portion of this building. And back in October 18th of 2024, the Town Hall Improvement sent an email requesting that a definitive master plan be put together by somebody other than our committee, because we don't have the money to do it, and, and to this date, we still don't have a response. That's the kind of project that really needs somebody to get wrapped around and come up with, what are you gonna do with this building, and, or are you gonna get a different building? And again, this goes back eight months, and we were asking exactly that same kind of question. You know, what's happening with this building? Somebody needs to put a plan together as to how to upgrade this building or keep this building functioning as a town hall.
So-
Again, we've asked this, but we haven't gotten a response.
You may not have gotten a written response, but you were in some of these meetings when we talked about the grant writer and the priority for her to do grants, and the problem with it was that it was too late by the time, in October, it was too late, when I had Lindsay checking in to the grants, that she said it was too late for this year, it would have to go into the next year. So that's when we started receiving funding from our state rep, and I thought it was pretty generous that they gave us 25,000 for an earmark.
And so-
And if it wasn't for Sarah having regular communications with Donnie Berthium and the Town of Spencer, I don't think we would have got that.
So Ron came to us, I think it was on a Monday, and said, "We have Chinus to get some projects funded, some earmarked projects. Do you have anything?" I think we gave him a list of four, four or five different projects, a couple of which we've never, one was a God recommendation, and that was to do flooring in these offices, which we got prices for. Never heard back as to whether he wanted to do it or didn't want to do it. So anyway, that, that was a floor project.
Well, I think I made it very clear, the windows were a priority, and that I have not gone to do any of the flooring. The flooring in Karen's office, I understand, I found out just the other day, that there was actually a report of mold in the carpet in, in Karen's office, in Lois's office, and we haven't dealt with that. So those are some of the things that would be ahead of sanding a floor on the second floor for the green room. But, but even more important than that, I voted against the carpet in this room, because fundamentally, I don't see the difference between the old carpet that was here and, and the one that, that we have. And this thing off-gassed so bad for the first couple of weeks after it was done, but I, I literally was not in favor of putting carpet in. I would like to see, and, and here's the other problem, Don. As, as the election came and the chairman changed, I don't know what Brad was doing. I don't know the communications that Brad was having with Ron. I can't be privy to that, other than in a selectman's meeting. So, so the way the law is set up, that I cannot speak to another select board member outside a meeting, automatically causes for dysfunction in some ways and lack of communication. And, and, and there are so many different projects going on, I'm just a volunteer, and I do an awful lot of work as a volunteer. I can't do much more. So for you to say that is a lack of communication, I will agree to that. And if I was any part of that, I will apologize, but I thought I made it very clear to Ron that the priority are the windows. So I, I can't give a whole lot more than I've been giving to the town.
So let's go back to this floor, and why this floor was done, was because of two inequality reports that were done that said this was molding. This is very first time I've heard anything about mold in another office. If the Town Hall Improvement Committee had known about that, we certainly would have reacted to it. It's not windows, but that's what we would have done.
So, anyway. Any other discussion on the-
No, I just think that obviously there needs to be more communication.
We're gonna get to that in our, a little farther down here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's on our agenda, that's communication.
I was gonna ask, was someone gonna jump with the peg so they require people to know?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. And I'll talk to Jacob a little bit after, to try and pick his brain, but, yeah. I mean, we can revisit it, I guess, going forward if you want, but I think fiscal year '26, their projects do need to be thought about, and I guess we discuss at a later date.
But whether you're, whether Don's on the board or the committee, if, Mary Lou, if you could pass it on, that, I think, I think the task of the Town Hall Improvement Committee needs to be adhered to, and that, maybe that would have taken some of the miscommunication away. If you followed the task and, and came to the Board of Selectmen and said, "This is what we want to do, specifically to the board," then we could have, have you read the task lately of the, the charge?
We've done it every year.
You may have, but you've clearly overstepped the charge, if, if that's what you're saying, you've done every year.
Either way, I think going forward, there needs to be more communication, and there needs to be some discussion about what they're gonna do in fiscal year '26.
I'm gonna ask again for a clarification, a communication of what we're supposed to do, what you're telling-
I'm a hard no.
Happen tomorrow-
I'm a hard no.
On those two contracts. So those two contracts are up to be canceled. Is that, is that correct, that you're saying?
I'll, I'll call for, I'll call for a motion from the board. Would, would you like to make a motion on the two projects?
So I'm on board with the first one for tomorrow, only because it's tomorrow, but the second one, no, I'm not on board.
And I'm a no on both.
So we're not on board with either discussion.
And, yeah, it's gonna say the motion doesn't pass, one to one.
Yeah, either, either way, though, so, what do we do?
So we're gonna have to cancel for tomorrow, we're gonna have to cancel the, the second project.
So cancel both contracts?
Yes.
So Ron should take care of it.
If you guys would like to, us, to, to, if you would like to delegate to the board, we will take care of it.
In order for us to do it, we have to convene an emergency meeting, so it's gonna be-
We will, Ron will, Ron will take care of it.
I have both, both the vendor's information.
Harry, number five, update existing policies. Oh, I'm sorry, number four, municipal transfers. So I'm gonna pass these to you, so you can make the motion.
So you should have five sheets, yeah.
Yeah, can I take a motion to accept the five sheets as written?
Yeah, I think, yeah, because, I mean-
I don't see why not.
I don't need to name all of these.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, you're just gonna be endorsing it, and as soon as they're endorsed, they're-
Or you could do the date, maybe, this one has written this one, they all have different marks, some of them are the same.
Yeah, some of them are the same.
That's all right, but they're public workers, I mean, they're public workers, so-
We can lump them.
Could I ask a question of, of Ron, before you go ahead and decide? Can you, can you call or something I get together tomorrow? Because I was concerned about why the group insurance was, there's so much money left in group insurance to be able to transfer into other accounts. Did we misbudget that, or something happened?
I spoke with Lori about that today, and she indicated that she puts a significant amount of extra there, because from the start of the year, or wherever the teachers at, she says the big flux is with the teachers. So especially in this year, she put a, she had some fluff in that area.
I guess it depends on how many people get sick or whatever, and being a hard-
General insurance deductibles come out of that, too.
Well, part, part of the reason you put a buffer in is for new hires, because you don't know if you, if you have a new hire, what plan they're gonna take.
And whether they're gonna be a family plan or a single plan.
Right, just in, in the seven years I've been, I've never seen that large of, whatever. I guess they've been used, used up the group weight, group insurance prior. This year was just a good year as far as people not getting ill or anything, whatever.
Probably, under circumstance.
Well, I think also the change in, was any of that in the change in insurance, or probably not, right?
No, that, yeah, doesn't take effect till '71.
All right.
Yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
I made a motion.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
All right, okay, all in favor? I, I'm assuming that was that discussion, but I'll open it to the floor. Any other discussion on the, on the via transfers?
Well, you wanna do it again?
It was weak, weak at best.
All right, I'll, I'll redo it. I'll make a motion to accept the municipal transfers as written.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item number five, update existing policies. Ron, I'm gonna let you go with that. You had, you've done some work on it.
Yes, as we had discussed at a previous meeting, there are literally a binder of about four or five inches thick of old policies, and I just kind of cherry picked a, a couple of them, just to get the, the process going, one of which is one that we had discussed at least a couple occasions, I believe, and that was the cell phone policy. You should see that in your, your packet. And I guess at this point, I, obviously this is just a, a draft policy, spaced upon the discussion that we had had previously, and at this point, I guess, if there's any changes, any amendments, or if it's just not acceptable, then I guess now's the time to, to discuss that.
I think I'm gonna opt to review this more and bring it back up when our third select person is here. I think it would be, there's no reason to rush on this.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's absolutely no rush on any of these.
Okay. All right, and then, uh-
Then there is another one that we had, I guess, briefly discussed, and that is a, I, I guess it's purely more of a policy, if you will, with the Board of, with the Select Board, with their meetings with accommodations, and how that process for requesting accommodations works. What I presented before you is a draft, which is really just an extension, and maybe just formalizing the policy that the Select Board has adopted.
Okay.
And that's what we have before us, with the, with the intent to be that that would become a townwide policy for all boards and commissions.
Okay. And again, I think I would like to wait for Beth to weigh in as well, and I, I wanna make it clear, Beth isn't here tonight because she had a, a flight that was postponed, so in all fairness to her, shit was beyond her control. So we'll, we'll put, Karen, do you mind putting both of those on the agenda for next month?
Yeah.
Next week, or whenever we meet next. So number seven, the spending freeze again. Ron, you spoke to Lori, so-
Yeah, I spoke to Lori. Frankly, a full-blown spending freeze for the rest of the fiscal year? Probably not necessary at this point, but it probably is worthwhile to bring it back to the, the 100 that was originally discussed, because as I had stated before, we're, we're very, very close at this point, and literally one- close at this point, and literally one larger invoice could tip us over the edge.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for a hundred dollar spending freeze for the end of fiscal 25.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As far as invoices that have been expended but not submitted by volunteer committees, does that cover that also?
And I guess this is back to the discussion that we just had.
Well, I was trying to be clear, because I have a, a meeting tomorrow with a volunteer committee, we have an invoice that's gonna be approved and then submitted to Lori, so that'll sit there until we decide whether or not there's enough money in the budget to pay it. Is that not important?
And, and so has the work been performed?
Yes.
Well, then, if the work has been performed, then it's clear to me the money is spent, right?
Right.
But, but if you're gonna hire someone tomorrow to then get an invoice, I'm gonna say it's a hard no.
No, I, I understand that. It's an invoice from January, and it's gonna be, it's been submitted, we're gonna vote, and it's gonna be submitted to Lori, and money is in the line item, so I mean.
So it was specifically line itemed for this particular?
Well, it's South Palm Beach expenses, so it's a small South Palm Beach expense that, you know, we just got the invoice, and we're gonna, you know, approve it, and then it's, you know, whether it gets paid or it doesn't get paid.
So is the work?
We're not gonna have the meeting if we don't have to.
Yeah, so, so just so I'm clear, has the work been completed?
Yes.
Well, then it needs to be paid.
Okay, so, so this is what I'm, I'm still confused about, freeze, freezes on future stuff, is that what you're?
Any work that's not done, we're not doing. Any work that's done, we have to pay our bills. Right? Is that, Ron, are you, is that clear?
And like I said, that was my understanding when we had the $500 freeze. But, yeah, I guess now it's, it's actually in, in the discussion, so hopefully that's, it's clear to all, to all.
Yeah, that's okay, I was just getting a little confused about that.
And then, and then what really kinda makes it a little more confusing, if this is a line item spending that you've prepared for on an annual basis, I think that's a little different than, and would, would have a little higher priority even if it wasn't already done. But the fact that it's already done, I would say it's clear to pay your bill. Yes?
Council on Aging.
Yes.
Are we to cancel all programs for the rest of June?
I don't, I don't think that this was the intent. I think it's the, the intent of this was purchases, special projects, things of that nature. I would not wanna see anything with the Council on Aging, it's such a small budget to start, and a lot of people depend on it. I'm, I'm not in favor of stopping something like that, so I'll ask Sarah and Ron to weigh in.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you go back to the discussion we had a couple weeks ago with regards to $500 spending freeze, we'd indicated if it's essential, so if it's Chief Blanchard putting gas into a, into a vehicle, or things along those lines, then yes, that's.
We're not gonna send the highway workers home to save money till fiscal 26, and we're not gonna do that to the Council on Aging either.
All right, because we have scheduled foot clinics, we have scheduled programs.
Very important, very important, to me, of the highest priority. All right, number eight, request for use of the Town Hall in case of rain regarding the Congregational Church. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Fiscal year 26 annual appointments, I'm gonna ask that we hold on that until Beth is back as well.
Skip nine.
Okay, so then you'll have to, you'll have to call a meeting, but, because the next, if we wait two weeks, it's gonna be July 1st. And usually these, these expire June 30th.
Yeah, good point.
I mean, unless, I mean, is it gonna be someone that's gonna have a meeting on July 1st? I don't know.
Okay. What's your pleasure, Sarah?
I'd rather have a meeting next week than.
Okay, I agree.
So next Tuesday?
Yeah, let's schedule a meeting for next Tuesday, hopefully Beth can attend.
What's it be?
24th?
Yep.
Okay. And, yeah, okay.
Do you wanna do them tonight, or do you wanna?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
They'll be tuned, no matter what.
All right, I skipped over number nine, we had the resignation of the highway admin and the grant writer.
Okay, motion to accept the resignation.
So moved. All in favor? Number 11, this is, this is you again, Ron. We're gonna talk about the town administrative goals, objectives, and the possibility of getting a weekly report from you regarding more conversation and more meeting with existing employees, department heads, the chairman of the committees, and maybe even other committee members.
Yes.
So I'm hoping that in doing this, we were somewhat aware that there's a lack of communication, and we, this has been on the agenda prior to this evening, obviously, so we're hoping to do better going forward. So what, what do you think? How, how can we improve the?
Well, in, in fact, in anticipation of this, I've already started to reach out to some of the different folks with regards to weekly status meetings, so that I can gather what their activities, what their accomplishments are, so I can include them into, and what I'm thinking, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you want some, some other type of format, is very bulleted type format. Here's what, you know, here's some of the accomplishments that I had as town administrator, here's some of the accomplishments Karen has had, here's some of the accomplishments for, for some of the other different departments, just so that it's, I guess it's easily digestible by, by the board. And then obviously, if there's particular task or achievement that you wanna dig into, then obviously we can, you know, I can, I can expand on that.
I know going down the highway department, he's got a whiteboard down there, and he's got the different projects on and different things, so this is obviously a lot bigger scale. But one thing that maybe could have been avoided this evening is the discussion that you had with the Town Hall Improvement Committee, coming back to the select board, and, and frankly, much more communication regarding that would not have put us in a situation this evening.
Right, well, I mean.
I'm gonna interrupt, I don't want it to be achievements, just achievements either, it could be something that there's like struggling.
Issues, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna use Council on Aging just as an example, but if, because she's sitting in front of me, but if they're, you know, if she's not showing up, or they're having a problem finding somebody to do the foot clinic, like that should be in the notes too, I think. So it could just be something that a department is lacking also.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, it's really, it's achievements as well as issues.
Yeah.
It's something that's gonna, should be brought to the attention of the select board.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're gonna work on that, and then you're gonna make a presentation to us then next week, maybe?
Yeah, what I could.
Get started next Tuesday?
Yeah, what I could do is maybe just kinda come up with a, a draft format, and, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if it takes a couple iterations before we can settle on what the appropriate format is and what the board is comfortable with, and then we'll just go forward with that.
Again, I think Beth will weigh in on that, and I value her opinion on that as well. I mean, this is right up her, this is right in her wheelhouse.
Sure.
So, okay.
And, yeah, and goals, do you have any goals, Ron?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, just some of them that, that I had written down in, once again, we've kind of already started, in fact, Jeff and I were just talking about it, is to do a, a postmortem or a review of the budget process. Basically, what went right, what went wrong, what could be, what could be better, so that we can hopefully take a, a step forward and make it that much smoother for, for fiscal year 27 budget process. So I've already started to reach out to schedule a, a meeting for, for that. I, I think another thing is performance reviews or performance appraisals for direct reports. It's, in fact, Kyle and I had, had discussed it a few weeks ago, it's, just doesn't seem right that I haven't done any performance evaluations for, for direct reports. That's something that in my previous, my previous life, that, that just didn't happen. So I think that's something that going forward has, has to occur. It's, it's best for, for all involved.
So I will say, some of it's really difficult, the fact that we don't generally have a special town meeting anymore, right? Typically, when you see the numbers going bad on a particular board, you have a special town meeting, you kinda kick some funds there to make sure they get through the year. The fact that we're not having that, so when you have your postmortem, when you go over the budget, right, who could have known that we would be 20,000 plus over the legal fund, right? This, this has been probably the worst, one of the worst years that I'm aware of with how, how much that's gone over. Had we had a special town meeting, and, and Peter Martell, our fire chief, has been saying for quite some time how much he's been over his budget based on the number of calls, we could have taken care of some of that as well, right? But where we're not having, so it's, it's extremely difficult to say, hey, how do we fix this next time, when we could very well encounter the same thing next year, hopefully we don't want to, but shy of having a special town meeting to reappropriate funds for some of this stuff is, is gonna be extremely challenging.
Yeah.
What's your thought, Jeff?
Just, just two things, I mean, we have always done a postmortem with the advisory committee, and I think, starting with Steve Gillis, when he was chairman, trying to make sure we had good interaction with the department heads, and when we didn't have a town administrator, now we have a town administrator, things have gone extremely well this past year. I mean, I personally, I think the committee will back me up. But I think we also need to make sure that we know from the select board what the priorities are, you know, as far as what you want, you know, the town to emphasize, whether it be a highway, a police, or whatever it is, so that we have a little bit better to be able to, you know, to align things a little bit better also. And again, I think probably we've been saying the same thing for three or four years, I think, and again, not to say anything negative about the previous situation, but with Wong, I think he's attended every meeting and was taking on more of the responsibilities of formulating and getting the budget from the department heads from the ground up, which made our job a little bit easier. And I think one of the comments I had with, from Marty, who has, is recovering from this triple bypass and is ready to go again for next year, but he said, even though we dug very hard on the, on the budgets through two and three meetings, he said, maybe we could do a better job continuing to drill down, peel back the onion on each one of the departments for the coming year. And again, again, not to say one way or the other, but I think some of the warrant articles, you know, they were being fine-tuned up right up until the last minute, where if the department heads had started that in January along with the budget process for the capital allocations, they might have been able to get their quotes in earlier and then be able to have a more precise number to submit. And that, to me, would just make the department heads thinking more, as well as knowing that we're gonna go down two to three levels in some of the things we asked them, as well as Ron's doing, and I'm sure this department needs. So I think the whole process needs, you know, go not only bottom up, but top down, too. The select board says, this is how we wanna look at it this year, you know, that we, you know, we recommend and advise to the select board, then, you know, we'll go ahead and do that. And, but, but I think we need to fine tune it every year. So I'm happy to, we'll have our postmortem and, you know, war stories or whatever, trying to go from there.
Okay.
But, but it really, it depends on, again, the, the select board, and I've stated this repeatedly, they give us a vision for where they want the town to be, and we have to make sure we find it.
Well, I will say, this was, the select board stayed in lockstep with the advisory board right through the town meeting, and I thought that was really important to do. So I think, you know, I, I know there were times that.
Certainly more involved this year, I think, from, from the select board, again, due to, I think, Wong's ability, because that's, that's the connection.
Yes, yeah.
And we always used to struggle with that before, well, who's, who's responsible for coming, and if we have a question, do we talk, who do we talk to on the select board? Is that the select board? But we rely now on Wong to say, you're the guy that we're directing Wong to.
So, so Ron did something good this year. He got beat up pretty good tonight, but he at least did some good things.
Well, yeah, making sure he copies our morning memos and things like that, and, you know, all that good stuff, but I.
We're, we're striving to do better.
I'm in Ron's corner, as you know, I've always say, he's, he's, he's night and day buffalo, you know.
Yeah, good, all right, well, thank you.
Didn't mean to talk so hard.
That's all right. Item number 12, response to open meeting law complaint. Ron, we've got five new open meeting law complaints, and it's all my fault. No one but me.
No, it's not.
Even though we have that tripod with a video recorder on the top of it, and I failed to state we were being recorded, I apologize, and I will make sure that I don't state, or that I, I missed that we're being recorded at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
So, Ron, would you? No, Karen, I'm taking it.
It's my fault, okay.
Nope, it's not you. Ron, would you go ahead with our complaint and then our response?
Yes, we, we had the, the complaint that was really, I guess technically it's one complaint citing five different.
My first five meetings, I did not state were being video and audio recorded, so it will not happen again.
Correct. Would you like me to read the response or the complaint first, or?
I'd like to do the whole thing, in all fairness to the individual that wanted, that put that together, let's give him the time he deserves.
Okay, so the complaint, this is just verbatim from what the complaint that was filed with the Attorney General's Office. I submit this complaint to report five separate violations of the open meeting law by the Brookfield Select Board recurring on the following dates, June 5th, 2025, at the Brookfield Elementary School, June 3rd, 2025, at the Brookfield Town Hall, May 29th, 2025, at the Town Hall, once again, Brookfield Town Hall, May 22nd, 2025, at the Brookfield Elementary School, and lastly, May 20th, 2025, at Brookfield Town Hall. In each of these five consecutive meetings, the Chair of the Select Board failed to announce at the start of the meeting that the meeting was being recorded as required by Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F of the open meeting law. This is a clear and ongoing legal requirement, the Chair must notify all participants at a public meeting if the meeting is being recorded. The fact that this omission has occurred at five consecutive meetings show a pattern of non-compliance, not an isolated oversight, and under a heading, if you will, of discriminatory impact on disabled participants. At the same time that the board is failing to make the public announcement for the benefits of all attendees, it is imposing an entirely different and more coercive practice on disabled residents who attend remotely, that do so under ADA accommodations, specifically disabled.
Ron, so this is the rant in addition to the actual complaint that you're reading?
No, no, this is, this is actually still part of the complaint that was, that was sent to the, this is actually physically on the form of the complaint.
Okay.
No, we want the supplement part.
Yeah, there is a supplement to it as well.
We're gonna read the rant as well.
Okay, so specifically disabled slash remote participants joining via Microsoft Teams are forced to interact with a pop-up window that states, quote, "By attending this meeting, you agree that you are going to be recorded," unquote. This complaint continues on a supplemental page which is attached. On that supplemental attachment, under the heading of Open Meeting Law Complaint Supplement Page, the complainant continues, "disabled participants are forced to interact with the pop-up window in order to enter the meeting. No such requirement or notice is given to able-bodied person who, persons who attend in-person. In fact, because the Chair fails to announce that the meeting is being recorded, the town is now creating a two-tiered system of notice and participation." The sub-bullet, "able-bodied slash in-person attendees" is the title of the sub-bullet. No announcement is made, no acknowledgement required, no pop-up or forced agreement. Second bulleted subtitle, "disabled slash remote participants, forced to quote-unquote "agree to the recording under threat of exclusion, pop-up notice is not optional. This disparate treatment violates both the spirit of the open meeting law and basic principles of equal access under the ADA and Mass General Law, Chapter 93, Section 103. While I also believe that the forced pop-up may be intentionally used to discourage remote slash disabled participants, I understand that this issue goes beyond. slash disabled participants, I understand that this issue goes beyond the scope of this complaint. I further understand that the Attorney General's Office is addressing this matter solely under the open meeting law and cannot rule on violations of other statutes. However, the background information I provide here is important context. The town is clearly capable of forcing an acknowledgement of recording upon disabled participants, yet it will not provide even the legally required verbal notice to able-bodied participants, nor will it simply comply with the open meeting law by announcing that the meeting is being recorded. What is certain is that the town's failure to announce recordings while simultaneously forcing disabled participants to acknowledge them as a condition of accents, of access, is an obvious and ongoing case of unequal treatment."
So how would we get around that pop-up blocker on his computer?
I really do not know. I think it is, if you think about it, if you're in a remote mode, that would be, I guess, the remote, remotely analogous to your announcement as Chair that this meeting is being recorded. It's just an acknowledgement that, yes, it's being recorded, and two, you're aware of it.
Okay. All right, fair enough.
Would you like me to, to read the draft or something?
He, he took the time to put that in writing. I think we should read it.
Okay, this is addressed to Mr. Kelleher personally.
Isn't there more? We're going to keep going?
Oh, that's right, there is a, there is a second page...
Yes, this is...
...of, of the supplement, um, under...
This is, wait, this is a supplement, supplement?
This is, correct, a supplement to the original supplement.
Okay.
"I respectfully ask the Attorney General, direct the, once again, this is another sub-bullet or sub-topic, direct the town to implement uniform lawful notice to all purchase, all meeting participants, in-person and remote, without imposing additional burdens or coercive pop-ups on the disabled attendees." Another sub-bullet titled, "Consider this complaint within the broader context of equal treatment of disabled residents that have been documented in other recent filings." The Town of Brookfield has established, excuse me, has an established pattern of attacking residents who file open meeting law complaints. The Select Board and its members routinely issue public statements and responses that discredit complainants, label them as harassers, mock them in public settings, and ignore the actual violations raised.
Hold on, Ron.
Yes.
So again, this is all because I failed to state we were being recorded?
Correct, that's all...
All right, so continue then, if you, thank you.
Okay, Brookfield has only one Board whose meetings are televised, the Select Board. Its conduct sets the tone for the entire town. When Board members retaliate or mock residents on camera, other Board Chairs take notice, and even if they do not, the public does. Residents see what happens to those who raise legal concern. The result is not transparency, it is silence. That is why today, the Town of Brookfield feels akin to a battered household. People are afraid to speak up, afraid to file complaints, afraid even to ask questions because they know what awaits them if they do: retaliation, humiliation, and personal attacks from those who should be protecting their rights. In prior, in a prior response, the Town Administrator quote-unquote mocked this concern, writing, and I quote, "The Board does not agree with your premise that Mr. Chavey has a Svengali-like influence upon others. I am not suggesting that any one official is a quote-unquote Svengali, but the Board's conduct sense has, that letter has proven," that's the way it's stated, "what the town denied. Its tone, retaliation, and public shaming do influence others, and they do cause real harm. It is time for the Select Board to hold itself to a higher standard. And if it will not, I respectfully ask the Attorney General to make clear that this pattern of retaliatory behavior, personal mockery, and intimidation of complainants must end. Participation in government oversight is a fundamental right, not a privilege granted by local officials. Brookfield is not a monarchy. I am not a peasant seeking, seeking leave of the crown. I, and every resident, have the right to invoke open meeting law without fear of retaliation, ridicule, or retribution." And that is the end of the complaint as it was filed with the Attorney General's Office.
All because I failed to state we were being recorded.
Correct. That is the...
So then, let's go over our response.
Okay, so the response, which is dated today and addressed to, to Mr. Kelleher, regarding open meeting law complaint dated June 9, 2025. Dear Mr. Kelleher, as you are aware, the Town of Brookfield Select Board is in receipt of an open meeting law complaint from you dated June 9, 2025. This complaint was discussed in an open session meeting of the Select Board on June 17, 2025. The Select Board authorized me, as Town Administrator, to send a response on its behalf to memorialize the discussions that occurred during the June 17, 2025 meeting. Your complaint alleges the following open meeting law violation. Over a five-period, a five-meeting period from May 20, 2025 through June 5, 2025, the Select Board failed to announce that the meeting was being recorded. With respect to the alleged failures to announce that the meeting was being recorded, the Board acknowledges this oversight. Rest assured that future recorded meetings will have an announcement indicating that the proceedings are being recorded. We sincerely hope that this explanation addresses your concerns, and we pledge to keep to the high standards of open meeting law transparency that the citizens of Brookfield should expect from its town officials. Sincerely, Ronald Dioponte, Town Administrator, with a carbon copy to the Division of Open Governments at the Attorney General's Office."
So also to make clear, it wasn't the Board, it was myself that failed to make that notice.
Guess we blame it on him.
So, no, I accept the blame, and as a result, Karen and I spoke, and on the beginning of each and every agenda, she has highlighted to, to, to make me aware, to make sure that I state we're being recorded and audiotaped. So, okay. Perfect.
One, one question. Did you go to send that to legal counsel, or were you able to draft that yourself?
No, I drafted this myself.
Our legal counsel bill would be another 25 grand had he had to respond to the Town Counsel every time.
That, that's, that's...
That's honest truth. So, okay. Harry?
Make a motion to accept that.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept it, and Ron, second it up.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Number 13, approve Select Board minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for 5:22, 25, and 6:05, 25.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Ron, do you have anything else for the Board?
No, completes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'll just leave the things first that you signed.
Yes, don't walk away with them, she needs a trench.
This is the information I have. I'm not taking this package today.
When you walk into it, that's his own number.
Okay, yep, Jason's, okay, this is the Susan, okay. Okay, so what I, I will do is contact them, in fact, try to get a hold of Susan.
And I think I'm wrong, yeah. I said this was starting tomorrow.
Are we off?
There is the 17.
Rich, I'm going to have to post this on...